Meeting of the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, February 17th, 2021, to order. We'd like to start with the pledge, and Anna Payne, who is my assistant and also a supervisor in Middletown Township, will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I am glad that we scheduled today's meeting, today, instead of tomorrow, because it sounds like there could be snow, and I wouldn't want anybody to miss the things we have today. And the first thing we have is Sarah Gregory from the Bucks County 4-H Penn State Extension. She is an educator there, and she is going to introduce us to some very special students and their very special pets.
Thank you for the introduction. My name is Sarah Gregory, and I live in the county 4-H. And today, we have three 4-Hers here from the Fuzzy Buddies Rabbit and Katie Club. And they have three different rabbits that they are going to say a little bit about. And then we have a special presentation for one of our members. To start off, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Addison Marriott. I'm 13 years old, and this is my trianta senior doe named Indy.
Hello, my name is Tara Lynn Sin. I'm 14 years old, and I'm here with my senior doe, American Fuzzy Love, and her name is Linguine.
And also Tara Lynn is the state rabbit Duchess.
Hello, my name is Austin Stutter. I'm eight years old. These are my English Spots, but I don't have a name for them yet. They are full watch.
Yep, they're full watch breed, they're English Spots. So Austin is going to give a little presentation about his English Spots.
Hello, my name is Austin Stutter. I'm eight years old. I live in Levittown. I'm in third grade at St. Michael the Ark Angel School. I am currently the National Pennsylvania State Rabbit Lord. To be Lord, I had to do an application, interview, showmanship, breed ID, judge rabbits, and take a test. I am a member of Fuzzy Buddies and Little Rock Schools 4-H Club. I am also a Bucks County 4-H Ambassador. I have been in 4-H for three years. My favorite 4-H project is rabbits. I breed and show English Spots. We travel all over the country to show rabbits. In 2019, we went to Reno, Nevada. Rabbits are a great hobby. Rabbits can be used for wool, fur, pets, show, breeding, research, meat, and therapy. The manure is also very good for garden's rabbit. Meat is very healthy. Today, I have my English Spot doe, Foody, and her three-week-old little cat. And Foody was a doe I bred, raised, and showed for the past two years. She has a best in showing.
Ooh! Good bunnies do hop.
Her litter is also the same color, I don't know. The markings are all different. The markings are fair. I will keep two of them to show, and the other two I will sell. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin.
Well, I guess bunnies do hop, so.
So Tara, and Addison, do you want to introduce your other bunnies that you have with us today?
Yeah, so I'm also here with Holly. So she's also an American Fuzzy Love Senior Doe, and so her color would be considered a solid black.
Addison, your other bunny?
I'm also here with my trianta senior buck named Clifford, and he is just a standard because they only come in this color.
These are three of our many 4-H members who do our rabbit project in Bucks County 4-H. So thank you so much for having us here today.
Great. This is such a great example of what we can do in 4-H, and I'm wishing that I was a kid again, so I could do this again. Any questions?
No, thank you for being here. And also, just for Sarah, for anybody, make sure you use the microphone. For anybody who might be interested in joining 4-H, what's the best way for them to do that?
Best way to join 4-H is to contact us at buckscountyextension@psu.edu, and we will get you in contact with a different 4-H club. We have over 45 different clubs in Bucks County, including rabbit clubs, but also everything from science and sewing to shooting sports. So if you have any interest, you can look us up online, Penn State Extension Bucks County, or Bucks County 4-H, and you will find our contact information. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before you leave, we just each have something for you. I don't know if you guys want to come down? Come here. This is one of our pets here in Bucks County. It's lucky.
Give this, present this.
Thank you for coming. Thanks to your parents, too, who are here. So although they are kind of putting their bunnies away, we're going to move on to our next item, which is Rachel Neff. Rachel is our Director of Human Services, and she is here to talk to us about a new service, The Hub.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners. This is going to be a hard presentation to follow. So my name is Rachel Neff, and I'm the Human Services Director for the county. And I'm here to talk about a really important initiative within the Human Services Division and an initiative that's important for Bucks County. As you may know, the Division of Human Services has a number of departments. We have our Children/Youth Department. We have our Behavioral Health and Developmental Programs Department. We have our Area Agency on Aging, and we also have the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission. In addition to the departments, we partner with a number of providers across Bucks County to provide critical human service needs for residents and community members in Bucks County. But sometimes, it is very hard to understand how to initially get connected to the service that you need for either yourself, or for a family member, or someone that you know. And so what I'm here to talk about is an initiative called The Hub, Bucks Human Services Connects, which is really about creating a starting point, an entry point, for people within Bucks County who need to make that initial connection to a social service, or any type of human service need. The intention is for The Hub to be a place where people can reach out. So if you have a worry about someone with a drug and alcohol issue, if you have a child where you want to get an assessment around their mental health issues, if you have a young child who you're concerned might have an early intervention need, if there's an older adult who you want to ensure can be getting some additional services in their life, the idea is to reach out to The Hub and for this to be a starting point for people to get connected to one of our many providers and other departments within the county. This is really an initiative that has come along quite a way. I know we've had our Commissioner, the Chair, Commissioner Marsaglia, has had this as a vision of hers for quite some time, as well as other leaders in Bucks County have wanted to ensure that we have an initial entry point to Human Services. So The Hub is an actual location. It is here in the Administration Building. It is on the first floor. It is open Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 4:00. It is accessible, knowing that we're in a pandemic, it's accessible via virtually and in person. People can call The Hub, they can email The Hub, they can walk into The Hub, they can make an appointment with The Hub, and they can get on that right path to getting the service connection that they need. We just had the ribbon cutting for The Hub yesterday. Again, I really want to recognize that all of our Commissioners have supported The Hub. Thank you very much, Commissioner Marsaglia, Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner DiGeralmo for being there and for recognizing this fundamental need for the county. And I also want to recognize, again, the Human Services Leadership Team within the county, all the Directors, as well as partner agencies through the Bucks County Opportunity Council, the YWCA, the United Way, they've all been a part of working on this initiative to bring it to where it is today, and to allow us to move through that ribbon cutting yesterday. So what I want to do now is I want to play a short video that really highlights the number of different supports that are available in Bucks County as it relates to human service needs, and throughout the video, you'll see contact information on how to reach The Hub. So we're going to play that video.
Mr. Rogers always said that his mother told him that in anything that happens in life, you just have to look for the helpers. And that's what I'm here to talk about today, is that we need to look for the helpers in Bucks County. People often struggle with issues, and until they're struggling, they don't realize there's so many resources out there for people in Bucks County, and we're very proud of them. You know, some of the ones that come off the top of my head, the YWCA has all kinds of programs. Right now, I'm so interested in their program where they're helping families with homework and helping kids in their pods to get some work done.
Maybe about eight months into my tenure here, I was still visiting the community sites and trying to figure out all of the programs, all of the services. I was at an after-school program at our Cree Side site, and a young lady was in the tutoring program, and I was just going around asking the kids, "What do you like about being in tutoring? What do you like about after-school program?" One young lady said to me, she said, I said, "What do you like about being here?" She said, "You know, these people talking about the teachers, talking about her fellow classmates, they're like my family." And that really stuck with me, and here's why. Children are honest, all right? They'll tell you the truth, just as it is. And for this young lady to say that she viewed the counselors, she viewed the after-school instructors and her classmates as family is really significant, because it's pointing out that she's learning the value of community. And that really stuck with me, and that empowered me to keep doing this great work, so.
Life path is out there, and they have group homes, and they have services for children and for families and people who are struggling with intellectual disabilities.
One of the things we had to do was it didn't make sense when we were in red to be bringing people into congregate settings, so we largely went out, grouped people back in their home settings, started doing more remote services, things with phone supports and video supports, other things that didn't mean bringing people into direct contact with each other.
If you need to know where a 12-step meeting is, the Council of Southeastern Pennsylvania, you can turn to them for any drug and alcohol issue if they are there for you.
So one of our newest programs is the RISE Program, providing support and treatment for outpatient treatment for adolescents. Just access to care was so limited in our area that we were able to obtain a SAMSA grant, a federal grant, to provide outpatient programs for children 12 to 18, and then for 18 to 25. The RISE Program is built on a model that engages families fully, so knowing that that is probably the most important ingredient, is a family approach. We're delighted that we're able to do that.
And then there's the Bristol Township Senior Center, and many senior centers throughout Bucks County. You know, they have trips, they have community gardens available, they have meals available.
The social isolation during pandemic for not only our seniors, but most seniors everywhere, has been brutal. They missed their friends, they missed their activities, they missed the social connections. And that is so important in not only keeping physically healthy, but also in mental wellness as well. And we're able to bring people back together, even if it's in a limited way at first, we were very happy to be able to do so.
And there's the Bucks County Opportunity Council. I mean, they really handled the pandemic for us. They had meals for people, they had drive-in food available all the time. Anytime we called them to go and help a family with rental assistance or any kind of problem, the Bucks County Opportunity Council was right there.
BCOC created a home delivery program out of the pandemic. We just purchased a refrigerated van, and so that van will help us do home deliveries far and wide that maybe we wouldn't have been able to do. We were really doing shelf-stable food through the home delivery, but now we'll grow it and help reach some of the pockets of Bucks County that where people aren't really able to get out into the community, or where maybe there aren't pantries. We most definitely plan to continue that program and grow it.
People who work in Bucks County Human Services, they were working through that pandemic, too. So if you needed help from the Area Agency on Aging, you could go ahead and call, and we answered the phone. Children and youth continue to protect the youth in our community. People had mental health needs, we answered those calls, too. You know, before the pandemic, or during the pandemic, Bucks County has services to meet your needs. Whether it's directly from the county, or one of the human service agencies that exist through this county, reach out. It can be hard sometimes to pick up the phone and make that call, but that's what we're here for, and we encourage you, whatever your need is, turn to us. We want to help.
So again, as everyone saw on the video, you can email The Hub at thehub@buckscounty.org. You can call 215-348-6201, and you can also walk in between the hours of 10:00 and 4:00 Monday through Friday. Please note that it is staffed. We have individuals from the Human Services Division who are working in The Hub. We have a full-time Human Services Resource Navigator there who just started yesterday. We also have staff from all the other departments that are cycling through there to provide support. So again, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing this initiative to move forward, and to our Chief Operating Officer, Margie McKevitt, we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Well, thank you, too. You're the one who kind of navigated through all of this, and we appreciate it. Before you sit down, have they had any calls yet?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Terrific. Thank you again. Next, we are celebrating with everyone Black History Month this month, and the first thing we have is a proclamation that Commissioner Harvey will read.
Thank you, Commissioner Marsaglia. Whereas the African-American Museum of Bucks County was founded in 2014 to preserve, promote, and honor the rich history of African-Americans in Bucks County, and whereas Bucks, being one of the oldest, the nation's oldest counties, has been home to heroes and villains of history, its legacy tied both to the brave liberators who worked the Underground Railroad and the errant profiteers of African-American slavery. And whereas the museum, despite for years possessing no permanent structure to call its home, has educated and enlightened the residents of Bucks County through the display of numerous artifacts and educational exhibits at schools, libraries, and other public locations. And whereas in 2020, the African-American Museum of Bucks County entered a 29-year lease agreement with the county of Bucks to rent the historic Boone Farm property in Middletown Township at a cost of $1 per year for the purpose of establishing a permanent museum. And whereas Boone Farm's significance to African-American history long predates its establishment as a museum, as its policy of fair pay for honest work made it a beacon to African-Americans fleeing southern states during the Great Migration in search of safer and more prosperous living conditions. Now, therefore, do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim the African-American History Museum of Bucks County shall be recognized as the county's official archive of African-American history. In so doing, we commit our continued support to this important endeavor so that Boone Farm, as home to the African-American Museum of Bucks County, might once again be known as a landmark welcoming those who walk the storied road of African-American history.
Thank you. And we have guests here who will come up shortly and do a little presentation, and we will be able to give you the proclamation at that point. So it's my honor to be able to read the next proclamation, which is for Dr. Frank Boston. Before I read it, I just want to say that I got a call out of nowhere, and an email from a Dr. George Whitehair and Dr. Gargi, Grage, I'm sorry. And they were both asking if I could participate in a panel discussion about Dr. Boston, and I was kind of taken aback because I had never heard of him, so I wasn't sure exactly how I was going to participate in that. But so I asked Bernard Griggs, who was our Project and Diversity Officer, to find out about him with me. And we did. And next week, Bernard and I will be participating in a virtual panel discussion at Bucks County Community College at 3:00, and we will be honoring this Dr. Boston, who I have learned much more about, and I will read about in a moment here, but you can see he was an officer in World War I. He was a Montgomery County resident, as well as a Bucks County resident. He had a farm in Hilltown, but he started an ambulance squad in the area that then became North Penn Hospital and is now part of Jefferson Hospital. And I thought, one of the most interesting things is that even though I didn't hear of him, I got a, as soon as this, as soon as the event was put on our website, I got a call from somebody who works for the county, who's a little younger than me, but had memories of his grandmother always telling him stories about Dr. Boston. She had known him, and they used to sit on a bench by where that hospital is now when he was a small child. And I thought, how amazing is this? And I was really touched that he had learned about him. So as we go into Black History Month, you know, I thought that I knew a lot about history, but I have to say that Black History Month is opening up a whole new venue to all of us, and Dr. Boston is an example of the people, places, and experiences that we all get to learn about, a history that we should have known, but now we really get to focus on. So whereas Dr. Frank T. Boston was born March 10th, 1890, to parents in the Philadelphia area, where Dr. Boston would later dedicate his life to service of others in the medical profession. And whereas Dr. Boston attended Lincoln University and later Medico-Chirurgical College, graduating and practiced medicine briefly before joining the U.S. Army to serve as a medical officer during the First World War. Whereas during his service, Dr. Boston treated soldiers in France, Moussagan, offensive and amidst the influenza pandemic of 1918. And whereas at the conclusion of his tour of duty, Dr. Boston returned to southeast Pennsylvania and founded an ambulance corps and hospital, the first African-American known to do so, both of which still operate today in Lansdale, Montgomery County, as the Volunteer Medical Service Corps and Abington Lansdale Hospital. And whereas, following his death on February 8th, 1960, a monument was erected in Dr. Boston's honor at 7th and Broad Street in Lansdale. And whereas, Dr. Boston owned a horse farm in Hilltown Township, Bucks County, where he resided for a portion of his life. So now, therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim February 17th, 2021, to be Dr. Frank E. Boston Day throughout the county of Bucks. And in so doing, we salute Dr. Boston for an extraordinary lifetime of service to his country and to the region, and for his contributions to our region's medical community that are still felt to this day. So, thank you. Bernard and I will bring this next week, or we'll send it over to the college, and they will hold it up on the virtual panel that we are on. So thank you for letting me talk about that. And next, we do have Linda Sally from the African-American Museum, and Bernard Griggs, if you want to come on up.
I just wanted to take a minute. Good morning, everyone. First, wanted to just take a brief moment to thank the Commissioners for your continued vision on Black History, African-American heritage, and just everything that we're doing here at the county to help the African-American Museum of Bucks County. And just kind of in continuing on the observance of Black History Month here at Bucks County, and following those wonderful presentations earlier, I mean, the rabbits were just the top of the thing here, but I think it's important to note that as we move forward here, after the two proclamations, we are now going to present to you a short video. Now, the video is in recognition of all the great work that Linda Sally and all the folks at the African-American Museum do as it relates to American history, not just during Black History Month, but year-round, and it's important to note. So if we could play the video.
Hi, I'm Bernard Griggs, Project and Diversity Officer for Bucks County, and I'm joined here today by Linda Sally, President and Executive Director of the African-American Museum of Bucks County. And we're here today at the Boone Farm at Core Creek Park in Langhorn, Bucks County. Within the next few weeks, the Boone Farm building here behind me will begin to undergo a major historic restoration to become the new future home of the African-American Museum of Bucks County. Linda, how exciting is it for you and your team to actually have a place to call home?
This is quite exciting for all of us. A couple of years ago, three gentlemen had a dream. They wanted a museum, and I know that they are, even though they're not here today, the team that have worked so hard to bring the African-American Museum to Bucks County is extremely excited about having a home. And here we are, celebrating Black History Month, but now, with a new home, we will be celebrating it every day of the year.
That's really great, Linda, and exciting for everybody here at Bucks County, and we're looking forward to being a part of everything that the museum plans to do in your future endeavors. The Boone Farm here has some connection to Black History. Is that right?
It's very popular in the African-American community. I sat with some unusual ladies many years ago, and they talked about Boone Farm. People have to remember, from here all the way across to 95 was nothing but farms. When the Great Migration started, so many people left the South, from North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, they traveled to Bucks County. They were headed to New York, but they heard about a farm, Boone Farm, that was hiring, and they settled right here in the Bristol area called today Trivos. A truck would go down to Bristol, pick them up, bring them up here, and they would work the farm and get regular wages with something they didn't get in the South. And they raised their children and had a better life, a safe life, right here in Bucks County.
Wow, that's really great. And really just makes the tie to the museum and the Boone Farm that much more significant. So Linda, Bucks County has some strong ties to the Underground Railroad. Is that correct?
That is so correct. Most importantly, the churches, the AME churches in Bucks County, believe it or not, was a source of the Underground Railroad, right here. Some of those churches most people are familiar with, Bethel AME Church, Ben Salem AME Church in Ben Salem, and let us not forget Mount Gilead. Those are just a few.
So what would you say, Linda, would be probably the most significant part of Black History that's tied to Bucks County?
Down in Bristol, there's a statue of Harriet Tubman, because there was so much going on down there. That was like, Bristol was like a New York in Bucks County. The ships would come in right there at Bristol Port, and the slaves were taken off the ship. People from the country would travel down to Bristol, and they would purchase different items that they might need, and they would purchase slaves. So if I was to talk about the importance or significant area of Bucks County, I believe I would start at Bristol and talk about the different areas that slaves was tunnelled through. And let's not forget the Quakers. There are so many houses right there on Ratcliffe Street that have the Underground Railroad that saved so many of African-Americans.
I really want to thank you for taking the time today to have this conversation here, especially right here on the property of the Boone Farm. We're actually giving everybody a preview of what it's going to see before the finished product. But before we close here, I'd just like to ask you what Black History Month means to you and the folks at the African-American Museum, and what the museum is doing in observance of Black History Month this year.
I like to say African-American history is American history. And Black History Month gave us the opportunity to share the rich history of Bucks County. As you know, the pandemic has changed everything, so we are now working on Zoom calls, and we are showing movies of history that will enlighten so many people that know so little about African-American history.
Once again, just thank you for taking the time to have this interview here today, and we here at Bucks County are here for you and the folks at the African-American Museum, and we're looking forward to the day we can cut the ribbon on this project.
Thank you for believing in us and believing in the dream that was an impossible dream that Bucks County has made come true. Thank you, and all of those who Thank you and all of those who have participated in helping us get this beautiful building.
For doing that video, Linda and Bernard.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. And just kind of in closing, I know the video pretty much speaks for itself. But just once again, I just wanted to take a moment. Thank you, Linda, for all the great work that you and your team continue to do on a regular basis year-round. And like I said before, we're here for you at Bucks County. Thank you.
And we have a proclamation for you too. Do you want to say a few things while we bring it down to you?
I just want to thank everyone for believing in us. This is an exciting time, and the time is now that the story that must be told, that haven't been told, we're about the hidden figures and the hidden stories. And I thank all of you for supporting us, believing in us, and trusting us. Thank you, the commissioners.
Well, we're lucky to have you. So thank you very much.
Linda and Bernard, first, thank you, both of you, for putting this on and recognizing Black History Month. And I always like an opportunity to talk about, briefly, about one of my heroes. And it came to my mind, because when I looked at the, when Dr. Frank Boston was born, 1890, that was the year here in Bucks County and in Ben Salem, St. Catherine Drexel established her order, moved here into Ben Salem and built the buildings that are still there on Route 13, and established the Order of the Sisters of the Blessed Sacrament, who at that time then spanned out across the country, helping at that time. And again, that was only 25 years after the Civil War. But they helped African-American people and people of the Native Americans. And they established a university in New Orleans, Xavier University, which to this day is still the predominantly, the largest predominantly Black Catholic university in the United States of America. So Catherine Drexel was always a hero of mine as a young boy growing up, because I went to school across the street at St. Charles Barameau Elementary School. And my grandparents and parents actually knew St. Catherine Drexel because she died in 1955. So they, my grandparents especially, knew her and just said, what a wonderful, marvelous woman that she was. And as you know, her mission, I guess, was probably to empower people, not to give them a handout, but empower people, especially through education, to help them improve their lives. And she established just a wide range of schools across the United States, mainly in the southern part of the United States and the northern part as well, the Indian reservations. I just wanted to bring her up. And you know, she's also a big part here of our Bucks County and a big part, I think, of, you know, recognizing Black History Month here in Bucks County. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move on to any brief public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Any brief public comments online, Mr. Khan?
No, Commissioner.
Are there any brief public comments in the audience? Yes, come on up, Commissioner.
Andy Moore in Middletown. First, to commend the board as a one-time, longtime dues-paying, card-carrying member of NAACP. I commend the board for the action with the Boone Farm. That's very good. Bucks County has a great place in that history. My question is relative, and it is a question. There's a difference between question and accusation. Question. 7A and 7B. Three months ago, on November 18th, $67,289 were taken out of the corrections budget to replace, do IT work at the Health Department. Four months ago, or today, we are increasing the contract at the correction facility to replace air conditioning units at the Health Department for $293,000. And then 7B increases the general construction work at the correction facility for $129,000. But yet, four months ago, the exact same wording, for the exact same work, construction increase, was awarded to the exact same contractor for $143,000. So my general question is, why are we taking the money from the jail, women's prison construction, paying for work at the Health Department once or twice, and then re-increasing the prison budget? What, does it, do we avoid bidding that way or what? There's got to be, and I don't understand the reason. I asked it legitimately, and when you get there, if someone could explain it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, is that the only issue, question you have? Okay. I mean, we can answer that briefly right now. I know that the increase in construction cost has to do with, you know, things that happen when you're building a new jail. This is the new women's correction facility that's being built. So sometimes you encounter things that you didn't expect to be underground or wherever they are. And I'm not sure, did somebody else want to take on the Clipper Pipeline? Margie, do you want to?
My question, we're increasing it, but in the last four months, we've taken out $67,000 plus $143,000, almost $1,000.
Okay, Mr. Spencer's going to talk about that.
Thank you, Commissioner. To answer the former Commissioner's question about the Health Department. So there are a number of projects that we've done through the emergency declaration at the health facility as we've created that command and call center. We actually haven't pulled that money out of the correction project budget. We're using separate funding sources for the Health Department building. We've just carried funding for some of the other contract work we've done there, the IT work. This is replacing, as part of the, kind of finish out that renovation, it's replacing the rooftop HVAC systems on that, on that building that's there. Part of that will be filtration units that are there, you know, that are, there's ionization technology we're using that will clean that air, providing, making sure the staff that are there, we have the cleanest environment possible for our staff that are fighting day and day to combat this COVID pandemic that they're working through. So just to clarify, it's not that we're pulling it out of the correction project. It's just that we're utilizing contractors we have on contract now. This particular one, we actually received quotes from multiple contractors. Clipper Pipe was the lowest quote. And utilizing, you know, we make sure that they're responsible. We've looked through their, the work that they're doing. We vetted the proposals we received, but they were the lowest. So we have competitive pricing on this particular one.
So you piggybacked on something that was there because they turned out to be the lowest anyway?
Right. Yeah, they turned out to be the lowest. They were the lowest, but we also had a contract with them. So the quickest way to get this work done, utilizing that existing contract as well as the emergency declaration, which is allowing us to not go through the bidding process, but we are getting competitive numbers to make sure that we're paying the right price here. So regarding the other work relative to the CMG change order, you know, during the project, as we got into construction on the, in this case particularly the penthouse level, which is where the mechanical equipment is housed on the women's project, all the HVAC, the air handlers and stuff that would be installed, there was an issue with the structural steel relative to that penthouse and some code issues that came up once we were in construction. So that is specifically what this, you know, this change order relates to. The steel structures, the spans of some of those steels as it was being installed and designed relative to code as they're going through and reviewing it. That's what this particular project, you're correct, Commissioner. We do have, in our overall budget, we've budgeted for contingencies. We've budgeted for unforeseen's. And we're still within that overall project budget that we established before we started this project, even with some of the unforeseen conditions that have come up, so.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda, including the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 meeting and Resolutions 1 through 16C? Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, moving to the regular agenda. The first thing, number 17, under the commissioners, approve the Ready for 100 Resolution, pledging to achieve 100% renewable electricity by 2035 and 100% of all remaining energy by 2050. And I am so excited about this, and Commissioner Harvey will tell us about it.
Thank you. I think, you know, people have noticed over the past 14 months that the three commissioners are really in lockstep on a lot of issues. You know, when it comes to how to move the county forward, how to serve the residents. And this is no different. The three commissioners really are agreed on the need to be a leader when it comes to combating climate change. You know, we're seeing a lot of very strange weather patterns, especially in the, in the deep south over the past several days, which is a direct connection, I think anybody can agree, to the change in the climate. You know, and certainly this goal, this Ready for 100, which has been put together by the Sierra Club and has been adopted by some communities here in Bucks already and some other areas throughout the country, is, you know, a commitment. You know, as they say, the old saying, sort of throwing your hat over the wall. Now you've committed yourself, now you have to go over the wall to go get the hat. And so this is something, taking a bold step, you know, to make sure that we are a leader here in this county and this Commonwealth in the country in committing ourselves to making sure that we're using the most efficient energy, the cleanest energy we can as a county. This would affect, you know, electricity that we use. It would affect the vehicles we purchase to be as clean as we can be. And hopefully be a leader to other counties in Pennsylvania and also to communities within, you know, this county that may want to join this. It does commit us to really, you know, doing as much as we can to find ways to use, you know, clean energy in all the buildings we have, not just electricity, but also in terms of things like, you know, in terms of water and heating water. And there's part of quite a few things we've done. A few, last meeting, we talked about the alternative energy ordinance that we sent out to all fellow 54 municipalities to ask them to take a look at that. We're also looking at what's called a CPACE program, which is something the state authorized back in 2018 that would allow for very low-interest, long-term loans to commercial property owners in the county who want to borrow money to, you know, do some green energy or some green initiatives on their, on their buildings. There are several counties that have that. So we actually have a meeting later on today to discuss that with Erie County, because they launched one. But this is something also came out of our transition team report. Our Energy and Environment Subcommittee really advised us to really, you know, take some bold efforts when it comes to being a greener county. You know, it's, we have green in our county seal. We're trying to get green throughout the county, so.
That's a great way to put it, and thank you for your work on this. This is a tremendous thing that we can do to try to offset the effects of climate change. And we all have a responsibility individually and as a county, a state, and a nation.
Just, you know, protecting the environment and renewable energy and doing what we can to protect the environment through renewable energy should not be a partisan issue. It should be an issue that everyone is concerned about, no matter what party you're from or where you're at in the state. And this is actually an issue that, when I was up in Harrisburg for a number of years, I worked on a similar issue for a statewide initiative with renewable energy, to move to renewable energy. And I believe, and I have my memory, but I believe we did do something statewide that would, the state would move to renewable energy over the course of a number of years. So protecting the environment has always been important to me, and I want to just thank Commissioner Harvey for taking the, taking the lead again on this issue. I think it's really important.
Thank you.
And number 18, Workforce and Economic Development. The Bucks County Economic Development Corporation, Doylestown, Pennsylvania, approved contract to administer the Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. This is subject to final approval by the solicitor. It's $500 per completed application. Ms. McKevitt, do you want to do this?
Sure. So this is a contract as a result of Act 1 that was passed by the state. It is a program that's going to be run out of the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. The county is going to be receiving $7.1 million to participate in a Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. It will be a partnership with the economic development agencies out in the county. The grant, grants will be available to the hospitality industry. They will be up to $50,000. The grant round will begin in March and will run through the county. And hopefully, we will get this money out into the hospitality industry, into the businesses that need it the most quickly. We, we've already partnered with the Economic Development Corporation in talks with the Redevelopment Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and the Visit Bucks County. They did our rounds of Bucks Back to Work grants, so they are going to administer these grant funds as well.
And if anybody's interested, they should contact Visit Bucks or Economic Development Corporation.
So right now, our Workforce and Economic Development Office is managing the questions.
And you can find that on our website.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Any questions on either regular agenda item? Is there a motion to approve on the regular agenda 17 and 18?
No move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have some budget adjustments. Mr. Bascola.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's five budget adjustments for consideration for 2020 to help close out the calendar year 2020. Number 26 is reallocating $146,000 from other areas in the general fund to cover additional positions that were created in the Commissioners' Cost Center. 27, 28, and 29 are recognizing additional state revenues and the expenses incurred in Health Department, Human Services, and the Chaminde Manor related to the pandemic. And adjustment number 30 is just recognizing a transfer between bond funds in furtherance of closing out both of those older bond issues.
Any questions?
No impact on the general fund.
No impact. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the budget adjustments in that, 26 through 30?
No move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And personnel actions? There a motion to approve the personnel actions for today? Or any questions?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye opposed? Any other civics? I have one for our annual contribution to Special Equestrians for $4,000. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have no appointments today, and we'll move on to the Chief Operating Officer's report. Ms. McKevitt.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I just have a, I just want to thank our behind-the-scenes staff for our presentations and our proclamations today. Gail Humphrey brought us our presentation of the bunnies and the 4-H club. So thank you, Gail, for that. And Rachel, and you and your team for Human Services and the Hub. We can't thank you enough for coming here and working with us in Bucks County to get that, that program up and running. It's something that we've been working on for a number of years. So we appreciate all that you've done and your staff and the Human Services Departments that have participated with you and our nonprofit partners. So thank you for that. And Bernard, we, again, we can't thank you enough for coming here, working with us and on such important issues and matters in the county, not only for Black History Month and for our Walking Wild Black program, but for all the projects that you're managing too. So I wanted to thank you. And then also, I want to make note of, one of our agenda items on the, on the meeting, for this meeting, was the Health Department. It's our partnership with the Pennsylvania Biotech Center. And they are going to help us by, by providing storage space for the vaccine. and they are going to help us by, by providing storage space for the vaccine. Once we get the vaccine, we need freezer space that is capable of handling the amount that we're getting. And then also, it needs to be sub, I think it's negative 70 degrees. And they have a very big storage space facility that we are, they have allowed us to use, and I just want to thank them for partnering with us to do that in the future as we get the vaccine. And that's all, that's all I have for my report today.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Khan, this lister's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. So two items for today. The first is, since our last commissioner meeting, there was a federal judge here in the Eastern District of Pennsylvania who granted a motion by the Bucks County Retirement Fund to be named the lead plaintiff in a major securities class action against Endo International. This was a significant case, or is a significant case, in which many investors, including the retirement fund here that the board acts as a steward for, suffered losses as a result of fraudulent or alleged fraudulent behavior by Endo International. And there was a major problem in the case, and there was a need for a new lead plaintiff. And Bucks County has stepped forward, and, and the judge recognizing the appropriateness of Bucks as well as the attorneys involved who are working very closely with the law department, put Bucks in the lead to really shape where that litigation is going to go. And that has really helped raise the profile of the program that these commissioners have been building over the last year to bring a lot of hourly legal work in-house, but at the same time, work with outside counsel where it makes sense, especially in areas where we can look for lawsuits or affirmative litigation for us to vindicate interests that Bucks County has. And so I would say at this point, over the last few months, we've been averaging at least one meeting a week with attorneys who are pitching to Bucks County different ideas, different ways in which, at no out-of-pocket costs or expense to the county, we might be able to recover damages or see positive changes for the benefit of the people of Bucks County. The second thing, and final note, is the Domestic Relations Section, which is supervised by the courts, has been in the process over the last five or six months of bringing in-house their staffing of courtrooms for hearings concerning the non-payment of child support, and this is really important work. It's a new model for the courts to use, having their own in-house attorneys. And there's been something of a gap for these past few months as new employees have been put in place, hired, and trained. And to help fill that gap, the courts asked our Legal Services Division for legal support, and fortunately, the wonderful staff at our Guardian-Adletham office, which traditionally focuses on advocating for children, was able to carve out some additional time. In particular, their chief deputy, Christine McMonigal, really worked extremely hard, especially in the last five or six weeks, to make sure that all of the needs were being met and that these hearings, which again are very important, were being appropriately staffed for the court. So thank you to Christine and all the attorneys at the GAL. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, and we will move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to echo Ms. McKeavitt's thanks to all the people who helped us do the presentations earlier today, and I'm going to add a name. And I'm sure she didn't miss this one on purpose, just an oversight. When you start thanking people, there's always somebody you miss, it just happens. And I feel bad because you just walked out the door, but the videos that you saw were put together by Jim O'Malley from Public Information, who's really been, we've been putting him to the test in his editing skills over the past year or so, really, since he kind of joined our staff. You know, he did a lot of videos last year on the election and different processes for filling out ballots and helping people understand that process. He's done work with us on some vaccine, public information things, which we're going to be putting out very soon. And obviously, a lot of the videos, all the videos you saw today and a lot of others. So he's really, he's really been, been earning his keep around here, which is, which is good. He deserves our thanks. Want to also congratulate not only Rachel Neff and our staff, Human Services staff here, but also Commissioner Marceglia, you know, getting a centralized location for people to go, to get their questions answered, to get help. You know, I mean, I think sometimes, you know, I went to college in Washington DC, and they talk about living inside the Beltway, and you get that Beltway mentality where, you know, things seem much more important when you're living in the Beltway than they are when you're outside the Beltway. And there's a perspective issue with that. I think people who are involved in county government, and ourselves included, even if, you know, just only been in it for a little while, you, you do start to lose sight of the fact that the services we offer here, what we do as a county, is not always as apparent to people as we may think it is. That we have a lot of great services, a lot of great programs, a lot of great people working here who want to help, and it isn't always getting out to people. And certainly, I think we've been trying very hard to change that over the past 14 months, and this is a huge part of that. You know, I dare say that creating this hub may be one of the most significant things we've done since we took over as a new administration, in terms of its long-lasting impact, which we believe it will have for people who just don't know they need help but don't know where to go. It's really just a one-stop shop at this point, and it's something that I know Commissioner Marceglia was talking about even before I was elected. She was talking to me about it and how we really needed to do this. And so I know it's something that's been on the top of, near the top of her wish list for a very, very long time, along with Mental Health Court. And so thank you for all, for your advocacy over the last decade-plus, and congratulations on getting this done. So, and also want to touch on just two more things. In addition to the Ready for 100, in addition to the ordinance that we put out to communities in terms of alternative energy, the county has also been working with some neighboring counties in southeastern Pennsylvania and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and the Rocky Mountain Institute over the past several months on what is known as a power purchase agreement. And a PPA is essentially entities like counties agreeing to partner with each other and create a, a market for alternative energy, which will then be sort of, hopefully, attract a developer who'd be willing to build a large-scale, in this case, solar energy project that would feed those customers, us being one of them. This is something that can be done. It has been done in some isolated areas around the country. There's one in Centaur County. Western, some western counties, including Allegheny, are looking at this now. Baltimore and some of its communities have something like this. The largest of these is in Melbourne, Australia, and we actually had a conference call with people in Melbourne, Australia, their government, talking about how they got this done. It is not going to be a simple process, but we are entering into what's called a letter of intent with Montgomery County. Philadelphia, I believe, is also going to sign on to continue our discussions, continue working forward. Delaware County is looking to adopt it as well. So our COO will be signing off on that as other COOs are doing. And it's really committing us to just being a good partner and continuing to work on establishing what could end up being a very large market for a solar energy facility that could get built somewhere in southeastern Pennsylvania. We hope gets built in southeastern Pennsylvania, which would help us meet the Ready for 100, would also create a lot of jobs for people building that solar energy field, and might start closing the gap. You know, Pennsylvania is behind some states when it comes to solar energy and alternative energy. New Jersey was, was, has been ahead of us now for a little while, so we're hoping to close that gap and, and really be a win-win-win-win up and down the board. So we'll continue those meetings, continue those discussions, and, but we're happy to be taking this sort of formal step with a letter of intent. And finally, just, obviously, we know with everything else that we've been talking about here, the pandemic is still the ever-present, you know, sort of boogeyman that we are continuing to fight against. The county opened up its three vaccine sites yesterday at the community college campuses. I want to thank the community college for their partnership. They've been great partners, allowing us to use those sites for testing and now allowing us to use those sites for vaccines over the next few months. We clearly, you know, we wanted to roll out these vaccine sites and make it work perfectly, as everyone would, and have everything move flawlessly. And certainly, there's been a tension on the problems with people sharing links, which they were not really supposed to do, and also with the software problem with the company that we hired that allowed some overbooking at one of those sites. We know that caused some confusion and some, you know, people, people being frustrated, and we apologize for that, and the company has taken full responsibility for that. But it's, we hired the company, so we're not, we're not dodging responsibility. I think it's important to note, however, that in spite of the news reports about things that went wrong, it's often easy to miss the things that went right. We vaccinated 1,000 people yesterday in this county, just the county. That's not counting people who got vaccines through pharmacies or hospitals. You know, so we are 1,000 people closer, and we're planning on vaccinating another 1,000 people today and another 1,000 people, maybe not tomorrow because of the weather, we'll, we'll think we're going to end up moving those. But we're getting 5,000 doses of vaccine a week from the state, and as we get those doses, we put them in people's arms. And so we're, we are going to continue to work as hard as we can. We will continue to try to improve every step of the way, which you always have to do. Even if things had gone perfectly yesterday, we still would be looking for what went wrong so we can make it better. And that's the goal of all of us here. It's the goal of our Health Department, our Emergency Management Agency, our COO, and everybody else who works on this project. And for those people who are concerned about, you know, getting links and how do I know if I shouldn't share it or if I should share it, the simple question is, you're not supposed to share it at all. But if you do get something sent to you, if it's in an email, or you see it on social media, or it's through your phone, the only thing you will get that's official will come with an email from the county. So if what you get is not, doesn't have an email from the county with a letter explaining that it's from the county, then you weren't meant to have it, and it's simply causing some problems. And unfortunately, we know a lot of people shared it because they didn't know any better, and that's fine. You know, we understand that. But we do have people, unfortunately, who are sharing it and, and are circumventing the rules. In some cases, we're learning that they're even cutting and pasting to make it look like it's official. So it's, you know, I don't really know the motivation of those people. I don't understand that. But certainly, we would ask people to be conscious of the fact that you're going to get an email from the county. If you've registered on our site, that's how we're doing it. So if you haven't registered on our site, please go ahead and do that, buckscounty.org, vaccination information, or vaccine information, and we will get to you as fast as we can. As we get the vaccine, we're going to put it out. So we ask for your patience, and, you know, we'll continue moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of that. Commissioner, do you draw a line?
Just real, just quickly, and I was going to talk a little bit about, about the vaccine, and I think Commissioner Harvey explained where we are very well. And again, you know, patience, I know it's hard to have patience, especially when people want to get the vaccine, and I can certainly understand it. But we're going to get it out as quickly as we get it. And, you know, I think we've got a good plan in place. Again, as Commissioner Harvey said yesterday, we had some, some problems, but we're going to do our very, very best to work them out. And the three of us, the commissioners and everybody that's involved in getting this vaccine are committed to doing it as quickly as possible. As quickly as we can get the vaccine, we're going to get it and put it out there. So just, we're going to have to ask people to have patience. I mean, we got to get the vaccine. I mean, that's the most important part. If we don't have the vaccine, you know, we can't put it in people's arms. So as soon as we get it, we're going to get it out there as quickly as possible, and we're going to do our very best to correct the problems that we had yesterday. And just want to touch on one other issue, which I touched on last time, and that's about this, this stimulus bill that's making its way through Washington. And again, I think it's so important to get passed. You know, I'm not sure what the final bill's going to look like. That $1,400 per person, I think is extremely important, and it looks like it's going to stay in there basically the same way that it was distributed the other two times, which I think is the right thing to do. And, you know, I'd just like to keep in mind that the former administration was in favor of that amount of money as well. So I think that's a really important issue. And the other part is that money coming to state and local governments, which would be Bucks County, I really hope that stays in there because, you know, a lot of the community, cities, and, and counties and municipalities, if they're a part of getting the money, could really put the money to good use. And there's still a lot of people out there struggling. I know there's money in there for, for schools and also money to help with the vaccine distribution as well. So I hope, I wish they would work on it in a bipartisan way. I understand they want to get it done by the middle of March because that's when the federal, additional federal unemployment money is going to run out. And I know they want to continue that through the month of July, which again, I think is, is really, really important too. So let's hope and pray that they get it done. I hope they do it in a bipartisan way in some fashion. So I think it's really important to the families here in Bucks County and across the country that this gets passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any brief public comments? Anything online, Mr. Khan?
No, Commissioner.
I commend the board for pursuing alternative forms of energy. That's good. I couldn't include this in my first remarks because I obviously hadn't heard what you said. I would just remind the board, however, that this is not something new to Texas. 1949, they had similar crashes. It's not something that happened just now. Secondly, part of their problem in Texas is that the turbines, the windmills, froze. So while we can look for, look for alternatives, let's be really mindful of it. Looking is fine. And my last point with that is, do we have any idea, I know nobody mentioned it, any idea, just a ballpark figure of what this will cost, what this will save, and anything like that?
In terms of the power?
Over the course of, over the course of the project, are we going to save, you know, a million dollars? Is it going to ultimately cost 10 million, or don't we have those projections at this point?
For, for the way a power purchase agreement works, essentially...
I meant to build.
Well, we're not building, that's what I was going to say. What you're doing is, I'm sorry.
Forgot to turn myself off. The way a power purchase agreement works, thank you, is we are essentially guaranteeing ourselves as customers. So if, if Warren Energy wants to build a solar farm somewhere, what's holding you back isn't really funding. What's holding you back is you don't know if you're going to have customers. And if you know, you don't know if you're going to have customers, no, no one's going to loan you money to build it. So if you have a contract that says, hey, look, I've got, you know, three counties and the hospital and the university and the city of Philadelphia who are going to buy X percent, X amount of energy for me for the next 20 years, now you've got your funding, now you build the project. So we don't actually build it, we just guarantee that we're going to be customers. Now, we can, because we're doing it this way, and this is, in talking with anybody else who's done this, because you're in the driver's seat, you basically lock in a rate, and that rate is locked in for the life of, for the 20 years. And, you know, it was something that I, I asked specifically when I was talking with, I guess it was people from Baltimore who were talking about this, I think, when they got on. If there was any escalator clause in the contract that they had, was there any inflation tied to inflation, any call, nothing? And they said, nope.
You may, you may want to be careful. You and I are thinking alike on that one.
Well, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little scary, but yeah.
Okay, that's fine. So that it would be something, a clause in there. We will purchase at or below...
Correct.
Something else.
Correct.
You're getting there.
Any other public comments? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Some of it.
Is there a second? We stand adjourned.